Please. I call to order the first meeting of the municipal year 2020. The clerk will please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum.
Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach. Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Sabby George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Janey. Counselor Maya. Mahia. Mahia. Counselor Wu. And I will practice, I promise. Counselor, we have...
Thank you. I would ask at this time for all counselors and guests to please rise. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. It is my pleasure to introduce Reverend Karen Fritz, the former pastor of the United Church of Christ in Alston, Brighton. Thank you. Karen?
Let us be in a spirit of prayer. Gentle Creator, we enter this new decade grateful, grateful for each and every one of the 700,000 people who share this place and call Boston home. As many in this city celebrate the light of epiphany and the courage of the Magi on this day, we too, each in our own way, seek the light of wisdom and purpose as we courageously serve in this moment of time. So many people come together to address and co-create the blessings of this city whose light is set on a hill. We are grateful for teachers, caregivers, parents, and youth workers, for social worker, housing specialists, police officers, clergy, organizers, environmentalists. We are grateful for transit workers and emergency and medical personnel, and all workers and volunteers and immigrants whose service is too often not noticed and whose sacrifice is indispensable for the health and justice of this community. Today, we especially give thanks for Andrea, and Anisa, and Edward, and Frank, and Julia, and Kim, and Kenzie, and Lydia, and Liz, and Marty, and Michael, and Matt, and Michelle, and Ricardo. Bless this diverse, beautiful array of souls who seek to serve with justice, to listen with compassion, and to lead with integrity. Bless their loved ones as they welcome them home each day, and bless each council member with energy and joy as they reconvene each time. May every person in every corner of this city be valued by the service of this community. May they find the doors of city hall open and their leaders accessible. Bless the hearts of these very human representatives with wisdom and love, and help them to always be receptive and productive and proactive so that need and solution might come to light together and further build this beloved community, Boston. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Karen. We now pledge the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Like to, if there are no corrections to be made to the minutes of the December 11th meeting 2019, if there are no corrections, the minutes will stand approved. Any objections or corrections? Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, if we can take docket number 0156 temporary rules out of order so that we have a set of rules for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the docket.
Docket number 0156, Counselor Janey offered the following order, that the City Council adopt the City Council rules of municipal years 2020 and 2021, I'm sorry, of 2018 and 2019, except for Rule 36, which is council committees, as temporary rules for 2020 and 2021.
Adoption of docket number 0156, all in favor say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Hearing no objection to docket number 0156, the rules are suspended and the order passed. Temporary council rules are adopted. Oh, and I now call on Counselor Michelle Wu.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I am honored to make a motion at the start of this new decade and new term for justice, equity, and opportunity for all. I rise to proudly nominate our good colleague from Roxbury, Counselor Kim Janey as City Council President.
I call on Counselor Ricardo Arroyo.
I proudly second the motion for the Honorable Counselor Kim Janey to be City Council President.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Arroyo.
Counselor Janey.
Counselor Baker.
Present.
Counselor Bach.
Counselor Janey.
I'm sorry, I should say Counselor Arroyo, Counselor Janey, Counselor Baker, present, Counselor Bach, Counselor Janey, Counselor Braden.
Counselor Janey.
Counselor Braden, Counselor Janey. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell, Counselor Janey. Counselor Edwards.
Counselor Janey.
Counselor Edwards, Counselor Janey. Counselor Sabby George.
Counselor Janey.
Counselor Sabby George, Counselor Janey. Counselor Flaherty.
Counselor Kim Janey.
Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Kim Janey. Counselor Flynn.
Counselor Janey.
Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey. Counselor Janey.
Counselor Janey.
Counselor Mahia.
Good job. Counselor Kim Janey.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mahia, Counselor Janey. Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor Kim Janey.
Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Kim Janey. And Counselor Wu.
Counselor Kim Janey.
Counselor Wu, Counselor Kim Janey. Counselor, there is 12 votes, the affirmative, one vote present. We now have a new president for the term 2021.
Counselor Janey.
Wow. I'm putting my glasses on. Thank you. Thank you all. And I want to begin by extending my deepest gratitude to all of my colleagues. I am so humbled and grateful. Thank you for your support. Thank you for putting your faith in me as the next president of the Boston City Council. I am so proud of the work that we have accomplished together, and there is no better way to begin this term and the new decade than by working with all of you to create a more inclusive and equitable Boston for all. I especially want to thank our former Council President Campbell. Thank, yes, please, give it up. Thank you so much for your leadership over the last two years. Thank you for your support during my first term, and thank you for your focus on staff development and racial equity trainings. Yes, we will continue to prioritize equity, inclusion during my tenure. Please join me in welcoming our incoming colleagues, Counselor Arroyo. Counselor Bach. Counselor Braden, who did a wonderful job presiding, thank you. And Counselor Mahia. Thank you so much for the work that you have already done in your communities and for the work that we will do together moving forward. I am truly excited to have you join us. Thank you to the mayor of our great city, and I don't know if he's here, Martin J. Walsh. Where are you, man? There you are. Thank you so much for being in the chamber with us today on this very special occasion. Thank you for presiding over our inauguration this morning, and thank you for your leadership in this city and for your partnership with the council. I look forward to future collaboration with you. I want to recognize elected officials in the chamber, and I pray that I don't miss anyone. In addition to our great mayor, we have Mayor Yvonne Spicer, I know she was here, from Framingham. Former mayor of Boston, Ray Flynn. We have the Suffolk County Register of Probate, Felix Arroyo, thank you so much. A Suffolk County Sheriff, Steve Tompkins, give it up. State Rep. Russell Holmes. State Rep. Nika Elugado is here. Rep. Mike Moran, Jay Livingstone. Rep., former reps, Marie St. Fleur is in the house. Former Rep. Ivandro Cavallo. I know I saw former City Councilor Rob Consalvo here. Former City Councilor Felix G. Arroyo. Yes, and last but not least, former Boston City Councilor Tito Jackson, my predecessor. I also want to thank our city clerk, Maureen Feeny, and her team. I want to thank Staff Director Juliette Valdez, Central Staff, and all council staff. Your work often goes unrecognized, but we could not do this without you. Thank you for all that you do. And to my staff, Samuel, Michaela, Chantel, Brandon, Partique, and Jasmine, thank you for all you do every single day to deliver for District 7. I am blessed to have you on my team. Finally, to my family, I could not have done any of this without your unwavering love and support. My mom, a frequent visitor in this chamber, is here, mommy. My dad and my stepmom have traveled from Washington, D.C. to be here. My daughter is here with her children, Jair. And of course, Rosie. Hi, Rosie. We are also joined by my sisters, my nieces, aunts, uncles, lots of cousins. Thank you for always being there for me. I want to also acknowledge that Rep. Kevin Honan is here. Thank you for being here. As we step into this new decade, I am so incredibly proud, and, excuse me, Rep. D. Domenico is here? Thank you. As we step into this new decade, I am so incredibly proud to serve as the president and lead the most diverse Boston City Council in Boston's history. For the first time ever, this council is majority women. And majority people of color. And this council now includes its first openly gay woman. And its first Latina. Representation matters, and this body is much more representative of the city that we all love and serve. As a daughter of Roxbury, I am especially proud to lead the council. My district has rich history and amazing cultural assets, but it is also ground zero for many of the inequities in our city. Despite unprecedented economic prosperity, we have an enormous wealth gap. We are in the middle of a construction boom, and Boston's property value is at a historic $164 billion. But we are experiencing a housing affordability crisis. Our educational system receives national acclaim, but our schools are increasingly segregated and racial disparities persist. And while we have the best hospitals in the country, the opioid epidemic has devastated families and communities. The climate change crisis needs urgent action before it's too late, and car congestion is bringing the flow of traffic to a grinding halt. In neighborhoods all across our city, families are finding it increasingly difficult to make ends meet, and sadly, some of our neighborhoods experience the trauma of gun violence all too often. While these challenges seem so overwhelming, I am encouraged and I am hopeful because of the good work that we have already done on the council, working with each other and in partnership with the mayor, and in partnership with residents in our neighborhoods. Working together, we passed the short-term rental ordinance. We invested millions of dollars in affordable housing and historic preservation through the Community Preservation Act. We passed the wetlands ordinance to help protect us from climate change, and we passed a new Strengthened Trust Act to protect our immigrant brothers and sisters. That's right. And together, and together, we passed groundbreaking, game-changing legislation that prioritizes diverse local ownership from communities disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs, while promoting, yes, while promoting equity, transparency, and accountability in how the city issues licenses in the emerging cannabis industry. In this new term, we must continue to prioritize equity, transparency, and accountability. And all of us, whether elected official, community activist, or nonprofit partner, must work collaboratively in our efforts to create a bright future for all of Boston. Our universities and hospitals are consistently ranked among the best in the country, and that's a good thing. These institutions contribute to our local economy and provide valuable services in our society. But it is time for us to revisit our pilot agreement with our nonprofit partners. To ensure that they are paying their fair share and that there is transparency in reporting. That is why I am creating a City Council Committee on Payment in Lieu of Taxes. Let's find new ways to tackle old problems, like free MBTA buses, to increase ridership and improve traffic flow in our city. And that one's for you, Russell. Where are you? That's for you. This is a climate justice issue, but it's also an economic justice issue. Income inequality is a persistent and pervasive problem facing our city, our Commonwealth, and our country. The dangerous decisions coming out of the White House are putting us all at risk and jeopardizing our ability to live out the American dream. Now, more than ever, we have to act at the local level. As our nation launches the 2020 census, we have to make sure everyone in Boston is counted. All must be included. In addition to the census, we must create more opportunities for the residents to be included in local government. In this term, the council will do more of its work in neighborhoods, giving district councillors the opportunity to host a council meeting in their home district, bringing more residents to the table. And who is at the table matters. It matters because it not only determines what is served, but who gets to eat. Who is fed. Everyone deserves a seat, and everyone deserves to be heard. Our vision for 2020 has to be one in which we lift up those who have been left behind. We must protect the most vulnerable. We must create equitable opportunities for the people of our city to thrive and prosper, regardless of their country of origin, language spoken, religious background, or gender identity or expression. Working together and in partnership with the mayor, we must be intentional in creating economic opportunities for local residents, people of color, and women, whether in construction jobs, small business opportunities, or city contracts. Let's continue to prioritize equity, transparency, and accountability in all that we do. As the new council president, leading the most diverse city council in history into the new decade, I know that the challenges before us require bold action, creative solutions, and strong leadership. I am so very proud of the work that this council has done thus far, and I know we're just getting started. Thank you so much. My heart is full. I am so grateful. Thank you. And at this time... Thank you so much. At this time, it is my great honor and my pleasure to bring up the mayor of our great city, Martin J. Walsh. Thank you so much.
First of all, congratulations, Madam President, and through you to the members. Congratulations. Before I get into my final remarks, I just want to introduce a couple other people. State Representative Danny Ryan from Charleston is here. Thank you, Representative. And the President handed me the liaison to the Boston City Council. Neil Doherty is here as well. Thank you, Neil. Wrong one. I got Danny Ryan, that's all, okay. I gave Neil a shout-out there. Let me, first of all, congratulate you on being elected to the member of this great body. When the President was working me last year, her passion is around kids, her passion is around equity, you heard an incredible speech here today talking about the issues that we need to continue to move forward on together to benefit all Bostonians, to make sure that everyone, all votes get lifted up with this economy that we have, and I look forward to working with you on it. To President Campbell, I want to thank you for your leadership over the last two years. They've been productive two years. We heard a lot of the issues that we worked on collaboratively together with the City Council and the mayor's office. I want to thank you on that and congratulate you on your successful... And also making history as the first African-American woman to serve as president of the council. So congratulations to you. To all the new and returning counselors, congratulations. I know I spoke to you over at Faneuil Hall, and it's a proud moment for all of you. And as we enter into a new decade here with this council, you represent new ideas and new ways of getting there, and it's important that we continue to move this great city forward. Collaboration is going to be the heart of all of our work. We need to continue to collaborate. As I said a little bit at Faneuil Hall, when you see what's happening in Washington, D.C., you've seen a complete breakdown of collaboration that's been going on for about 25 years now. We can't let that happen here in the city of Boston. We can't let that happen because the people of Boston deserve better than that. The people of Boston deserve us to work together. The people of Boston deserve us to work to make sure that we continue more work around housing, around schools, advancing the middle class, making sure that no one is left behind. And I want to just say to you all today, I am proud to work alongside all of you. I look forward to this council as we continue to move on over the next couple of years. And lastly, congratulations to the new counselors. Take this moment in. Take this moment in. I remember in 1997, when I got sworn in as a state representative, it was an exciting day because I was surrounded by family and friends, and very quickly, that time goes by. And very quickly, many of those people that were here with you this first day won't be here with you. So enjoy today as best as possible. Congratulations, and Happy New Year.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Now we will resume our meeting. We will begin with report, yes, we will begin with reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk?
Madam President, would you like to read docket 0141 through 0148?
Yes, please, thank you.
Docket number 0141, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Gregory Rooney as chairperson of the Air Pollution Control Commission. Docket number 0142, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Ian Russo as a member of the Boston Human Rights Commission, for term expiring on December 1st, 2021. Docket number 0143, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Benjamin Goldberg as a member of the Boston Human Rights Commission, for term expiring December 1st, 2021. Docket number 0144, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Leonard Lee as a member of the Boston Human Rights Commission, for term expiring December 1st, 2020. Docket number 0145, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Leslie Harris as a member of the Boston Human Rights Commission, for term expiring December 1st, 2022. Docket number 0146, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Margaret McKenna as a member of the Boston Human Rights Commission, for term expiring December 1st, 2022. Docket number 0147, notices received from the mayor for the appointment of Reyes Colat Talichia as a member of the Boston Human Rights Commission, for a term expiring on December 1st, 2020. as a member of the Boston Human Rights Commission for a term expiring on December 1st, 2020. Doc. 0148, notices received from the mayor of the appointment of Robert McEckren as a member of the Boston Human Rights Commission for a term expiring on December 1st, 2020.
Thank you. Doc. 0141 through 0148 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, could you please read Doc. 0148 through 10156? You just did 1048.
Yeah, how about 0149 through 0155?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Doc. 0149, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, regarding proposed minor modifications to the Charlestown Urban Renewal Plan Project Number Mass R-55 with respect to the creation of parcel I-23B-1. Doc. 0150, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency, regarding proposed minor modification to the South End Urban Renewal Plan Project Number Mass R-56 with respect to the creation of parcel 57, located at 380 North Hampton Street, and parcel 59 located at 599 Columbus Ave in the South End. Excuse me. 0151, communication was received from the city clerk for the filing of the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the Fifth Amendment to report and decision on the Lafayette City Center Chapter 121A project. Doc. 0152, communication was received from John W. Parsons Esquire, Executive Director of the Boston Retirement Board, regarding appropriations for fiscal year 2021. Doc. 0153, communication was received from Massport regarding Logan Airport Parking Project, Final Environment Impact Report, Environmental Assessment, EEA, Number 15665. Doc. 0154, communication was received from Anita D. Tavoris, Chair of the Board of Election Department, certifying results of the election held on November 5th, 2019, for the Boston City Council at large and district seats. And Doc. 0155, communication was received from Gregory Rooney, Acting Commissioner of the Boston Transportation Department, on the report of Small Vehicle Sharing Business Advisory Committee.
All right. Those personnel orders will be placed on file. Oh, Madam Clerk will read them into the docket. We are resuming the meeting. Counselors, if you could take your seats. Thank you. Thank you. Doc. 0149 through 0155 will be placed on file. Personnel orders?
Doc. 0157, Counsel Janie for Counsel Arroyo.
Counsel Arroyo seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 0157. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Doc. 0157 has been passed.
Doc. 0158, Counsel Janie for Counsel Mahia.
Counsel Mahia seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 0158. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Doc. 0158 has been passed.
Doc. 0159, Counsel Janie for Counsel Brayden.
Counsel Janie... Counsel Brayden seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 0159. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Doc. 0159 has been passed.
Doc. 0160, Counsel Bach seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Doc. 0160. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Doc. 0160 has been passed.
I've been informed by the clerk that there is one late file in the consent agenda. It's a personnel order. Seeing and hearing no objection, the matter is being added.
First late file in the City Council, January 6, 2020. Counsel Janie for Counsel Wu.
Where is it? The chair moves... I don't see the docket number. So this is why you don't do late files five minutes before. Okay, it's been added. Hearing no objection, it's been added. The clerk will read the first addition to the agenda.
In City Council, January 6, 2020.
Counsel Wu seeks suspension of the rules. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. It has been moved. Any announcements? Announcements? Great. I'd like to say a few words, if I may. As people know, over the holiday, we lost a giant in our city. A former colleague, former city councilor Chuck Turner. And I'm standing here today in this dais because Chuck sat there. Chuck was a fearless warrior. He was a strategic thinker, and he was a coalition builder. Our city owes him a great debt, and I ask all of you to lift up his family and his beloved community of Roxbury and keep them in prayer. Now I would like to ask all guests... Oh. So we have to approve the consent agenda? All in favor? All opposed? All right, then the ayes have it. Now I'd like to ask all guests and members to please rise. And we're going to adjourn our meeting for the following individuals. For Counselor Matt O'Malley and the chair, Erin Pasquale, Allison and Andrew. For Counselor Asabi George, Edward Duran. For Counselor Edwards, Vessina Vi Rapser. For Counselor Bach, Smokey Bacon. For Counselor Arroyo, former Senator James J. Henigan. For the chair, Gerald Zachem, Myrtle Jane Austin, Sarah Zena Fernandez, Tony Williams, Louis Watson Jr. And for the entire council, former city councilor Chuck Turner. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. And we are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, January 15th, 12 o'clock, here in this chamber. Before we adjourn, we've been asked to take a group photo, so I ask all councilors to stay a moment. And then there is a reception with delicious food from Soleil, from my district, and Piemonte. So I invite all guests to join us there. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.